I'm gonna start the public here at 6:00 PM. Matt, do you wanna speaker?
Ready to get going?
Yep. Hi, everybody. Matt's here from Rangeley Workforce Housing. I'm here with Rick Light, our engineer. And my partner on the project is a gentleman named John Wazilewski. Thanks for coming tonight. There are some pictures up here and there's a handout if you want any more details on that. After tonight, all of my contact information is up here. Anybody wants me to come by, explain things and talk about things, concerns, always open to that. So please, please reach out. What are we doing here? So who we are? John Wazilewski I worked for for about 25 years. Rick's worked for him for about 35 years, owns large market rate plans, senior communities down around Portland, Fountainhead, and Thompson. These are big communities, they have big lodges, they're independent living, they have assisted living, they have independent living cottages, and there's hundreds of units. So that's really where we come out, is that world of plan development. We spend a lot of time on details for look and feel, making sure things look right. In more recent years, with John and on my own and another partner, I've done some more senior, mostly senior affordable housing. Those are called low income housing projects. I own six of those right now. So we have pretty good experience on those two things. So John owns a house up here, it's a big ski area, he helps support the mountain reopening of the mountain. So three years ago, we were talking and, you know, what are you doing? What are you doing? And Rangeley came up, why don't we do, see if it's going on in Rangeley? So I came up, met the town manager, met the economic development consultant. And they said attainable housing, we're really, really trying to do some workforce housing up here because we don't have enough workers. So that's kind of how we got into this. And so started talking to people, did a study, looked at the zoning and started coming, trying to come up with some ideas. Came across this property fairly early on in the process. We believe in smart growth, which you can look it up on the internet. But it's basically, instead of doing development in far flung places, it's ideal if you can put it downtown where it's walkable. There's already water and sewer here, that makes the development more affordable. Here, you can walk places, don't need to drive as much. And it's just a lot of good things. And it's much more community oriented, especially for someone who's gonna be working hopefully in the village and around town. So that was a great thing about finding this. So that's kind of where the ideas come from. And over the last few years, meeting with people, doing the studies, listening to the board, talking with neighbors, talking to people. You know, we hear things and so you get feedback. And we will always tinker with and revise and simplify and address concerns. And that's what we've been doing here over the last year. And Rick will talk a little more about that tonight. I think everyone knows that attainable workforce housing is a huge problem in the country. It was on the front page of the National Papers again today. There's no great solution to it. There's a reason why nobody's been building nice, middle class housing anymore because anyone knows it's impossible. Construction costs are just too high. And so what you end up with is higher end housing. It's mostly what we've been building. And then the other thing we've been building is low income housing. That's the high tech housing, that is section eight housing, might be what some people call it. And that's for people who are at 30, 40, 50% of area median income. That's heavily subsidized. And the rents are in the $5, $6, $700 range for that. So that's sort of what we've been doing, it's lower end, upper end. We're not doing anything for anyone in the middle. Because it's really hard to make the numbers. To the state of Maine's credit, they came up with a couple of different programs. A homeownership program, which right now has no money in it. And a rural rental program. And it's really about trying to get at the middle group again. And so that is based on 80% of area median income. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. There's towns, there's a lot of ski town and resort towns, but every town these days that are trying to figure out how to do this. And you see lots of different ways. Some places, big company town, a company will go ahead and just build workforce housing. Saddle back and just one ahead and build workforce housing. And you'll see some of that. You'll see Bar Harbor, you know, a lot of rich residents get together, donate money. And they, they build it. But usually there's a town that's playing a big role in it. So it's, it's, you know, maybe a town piece of land gets donated, maybe there's a TIF. Maybe there's different things. My point is, there's gotta be a partnership. You gotta work together, this thing isn't gonna happen. The key, key, key first step for us is planning for approval. Can't apply for the program, we can't really move forward without land use approvals. This is a very, very competitive thing. So what happens is 20, 30 developers will all apply to the state to try to access this money. And they base it on developer experience, on smart growth points. You know, a whole different, what's the, is what if anything the town's doing to contribute to the project? There's all these different scoring criteria. The number one thing is you gotta have your planning board approvals. That's why we have to kind of start here to get going on this. The idea would be, we think there's a new round of this program coming out in July. So be ready for that. Ducks in love for that, when that comes along. So kind of, I understand, I've been doing this for a long time, I have a lot of neighbors, do a lot of things. It's very natural, people get concerned about something going on in their backyard. So I totally understand the emotion, the concern. We are not in the business of coming and screwing up someone's neighborhood or screwing up something, someone's town. We take this very seriously. We want to make things better. We want that to be good for the neighborhood, good for the town. So that's, that's why we're here, not here to screw things up. What is this not? It's not section eight housing. That's a totally different financing program. Some section eight vouchers are portable, you can go to different places. The rent here is too high for someone with a formal voucher, because I understand it. That's what we're about to rent. So really shouldn't buy to that. Somebody asked me about asylum housing. That's a whole different thing. And the person who's a developer, who's in that field, building one of those, they're, they're working with the state. That's a special deal, they have to wanna do that. That's not something that just happens to a, to a project like this. So that's not something we're gonna get into. Talked to the board about this. A lot of towns, I think we did this in Kingfield, they were looking for a contract zone, basically variance and waivers and things like that. We've talked to the board here, we've basically cut out anything like that. So we're trying to design something that totally meets the ordinances and the intent of the town. We looked at one point about a small apartment, apartment building here. Didn't think that could, it's mostly a single family neighborhood, some duplexes. So we wanted to look and feel like the single family home neighborhood. What is this neighborhood? Small, attractive homes, designed and priced for people who live and work in Rangeley. There'll be, you can see up here right now, there'll be 12 buildings, six of those, single family. Six of those duplexes. The duplexes, just like the first home I bought. It's an up-down duplex, so it looks like a single family home. But it's up-down. And the nice thing about that is we will have three different home types. Straight single family, which will be like two bedrooms with a loft. So that's a little bit bigger of a family. And then we'll have the duplex, the first floor will be two bedrooms, it could be a couple or something. And then the upstairs will probably be a studio or one bedroom. So each one of those units will have a different man. And it'll be attracted to a different person. So it starts to be, help out more folks. The units we're looking at in size, this is one of the big things we've done since we first started. Is we were up at that 1,200 square foot thing, couldn't make the numbers work, didn't have a chance. So we're looking, everyone knows about small homes, that's all we see on TV these days. So we're looking at 700, 800 square foot. You know, that's here.
What's your, or do you want me to wait for you?
Can you wait?
Yep.
As I said, we were looking at the homeownership program originally. Main State Housing Authority gave $60,000 subsidy towards the construction of a home there. That program ran out of money right around the end of the year. And the rural rental one yields $200,000 a unit subsidy. So it's a much more robust subsidy. So it really, really, really helps make the numbers work. So we've switched our approach to doing potential communities. Income and rent, as I mentioned, is based on 80% of area median income in Franklin County. That area median income, 100%, it's like $75,000. So 80%, what we're looking at is salaries of a single person or a family from roughly $40,000 to $60,000 a year to qualify to live here. The maximum rent would be about $1,000 a month for a smaller unit, up to about $1,600 a month rent. That's the maximum, depending on how the budget looks and how we work together, some of those rents could be lower than that. But some of those rents are high, people who are working at the town. So. But that's where we're targeting. In order to live here, must be full time. No short-term rentals, no sub letting, you're a full-time resident. Folks have my handouts and have some information, detail on some of this. Concerns, totally legitimate. How you make sure this doesn't appear like a project, like a section eight place? First important thing is an experienced professional management company. Folks are a tough job. And we, I've worked with CNC Realty, manages, like, right across the street here. Spoke with them again today. She runs a camp up here. They've done a nice job for us at our communities. Gotta have a good management company. Tenant selection process is huge. You have to stop and take the time with tenant selection. If you have an owner that says, just fill it up. No, I don't do whatever, just fill it up, you're gonna have a lot of problems. You're not gonna make money. It's in everyone's interest to slow down and do the background checks, do the criminal checks, do the credit checks, do all of that stuff and really target it. And here, what I'd like to do for a successful move ahead is really set up a partnership with local businesses. Where the local businesses can go to the employees and say, hey, this is coming along. Here's an application, talk to these people. And really set it up so that the people, the management company are seeing that they're qualifying for the community. Are exactly what we're all trying to do here, which is workforce housing and not somebody else. So working together can really help with that process. There's obviously, it's a rental community, so you have a real comprehensive lease, you have lots of community rules and regulations. They're serious about this. They evict people who aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. So there's legal documents that back this all up. So you have an owner, you have a management company. Also have Main State Housing Authority overseeing this, inspecting this, auditing it, making sure everything is run correctly and up for, working it well. We're working with the town, obviously cooperation. If there's any other issues or concerns or rules or things that really stand out, we don't mind entering into an agreement with the town to add those to our agreement with the town. It's like we said, the planning board, if there's conditions of approval, that you guys wanna see, we can add to our approvals. Other thing we've talked about with the board is, I know there's been a sense, and developers do this a lot. And I don't think they need, or we buy it, but they, they go to a planning board and they say, we're gonna respond, we're gonna try to make them affordable. And then they get into their budget, they get all their budget numbers together, and they can't do it. So they end up selling, they end up being at $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 homes. So what we've said to the planning board is, if this isn't gonna fly, if you approve this and it doesn't fly, we will come back, we approve a new project. More standard market neighborhood. We will come back and do that if this isn't gonna fly, because we don't wanna do a baby switch. So I'm sorry for the long pregame. That's it. And unless we wanna do questions, should we turn it over to Rick to talk about?
I'm gonna give Rick the floor. And then we'll take everybody's question. So. Just kidding. Hi, my name is Rick Light. I'm a site engineer and I do listen, I've been treating my colleague. I'm up here with Chris Belanger from Belanger Engineering, we've worked together to kind of hold these plans together. We've got a team of people, like Matt said, that have done, we've got a weapon scientist, a side of the property, we've got our geotech engineer out here, a surveyor. So there's been quite a bit of investigation. Obviously, you folks know the land, you know the neighborhoods, and we're willing to hear, wanna hear what your concerns are, what Matt said. But I'm just gonna do a brief overview of the project. I think you all know the site, but I'll just cover it quickly for the record, then talk about the project in terms of the zoning requirements and what we're doing from a land use perspective. So it's obviously Cross Street's down here. This parcel's 5.2 acres, plus or minus. And everything, as you know, slopes this way. Let me just, we'll see if they're just watching at home. This is the parcel, this area that was filled a few years ago, otherwise all spruce woods that you're all familiar with. And the property basically drains from school, you know, going to the south to Cross Street. Through the swale and ditch and down through the ditch here, through the 18-inch culvert and down towards Main Street to the south. And there's an existing access road that fits into the site right now. We have water in Cross Street, we have sewer in Cross Street, and we're intending to tie into both of those. We've met with Al Clinch, we've met with Brian at the sewer district, gone over the sewer plans. They've got a few adjustments, they wanna make minor, minor changes. But they're, they're agreeing that we, you know, we've met with them, we've designed the plans, and they're gonna submit final, any detailed changes they want. So I think right now, we're in terms of serviceability, I think we're all set. We're gonna take the overhead power, which is here, and we'll turn it into underground power and service the whole property underground. Which is really helpful when we look at storms we've been having, especially last weekend, close to near the coast. So what is the project? Like Matt said, it's, we're trying to develop communities, as Matt said, not just subdivisions. And the difference here between a traditional subdivision and what this is, or this type of community, is this is one, still one parcel. It's not, in the board, there's a board, check through the board.
We have it, we have it.
So the, it's not individual lots. It's all the lots, all the buildings on, under one ownership, one entity on one five acre lot. So what we're proposing on the project is a 20-foot access road, two-way, in from Cross Street. And then turning into a, a one-way loop of 18 feet, paved, all paved. And in order to deal with, help with stormwater, we're actually gonna curb, rendering sides of, we're actually gonna curb it using, we use the precast. Another, the foot form curving, cast and placed curving, concrete curving, which is super rugged. Not just the two minutes curving, we use that in all our projects now. It's, it's more portable and it's a really great product. But it kind of cleans up, when you've got a street like that, it cleans it up. Sort of like, you know, Alan, you've got the vertical curving, this is gonna be the sort of Cape Cod-ish, you know, concrete curving, but it's really good stuff. And the reason we do that is because, one, saves on ditching in front of the units. So you don't have these big ditches and culverts, driveway to driveway. And then, two, it also allows us to help better control stormwater in the streets and whatnot. So the project's gonna, like Matt said, originally proposed 14 units, but what we're looking at now, reducing it down, it's 12 units. Like Matt said, a combination of six singles and six duplexes, you know, top to bottom duplexes. What we show on the plan here, and you can see from the, like Matt said, some of the boards here, we're still working, Matt's working with different building types. So we're showing here schematically the sort of sizes that we're talking about in different particular buildings. That, like this model here, is pretty attractive. And if this can work, you know, that would represent this model here. So the exact building footprints are still to be determined, but these are the sort of styles that we're talking to builders about. That can be built either modular or stick-built and be affordable at the same time. The, the site, as you know, is wooded. One of the benefits of this site is it sits back to the road. And I'm saying, I'm not saying the neighbors aren't going to see it, because that would be, you know, if you're living here, it's gonna be incorrect. But, but it is buffered around the edges. And so I think that's helpful. You've got the school property to the north, which is all woods. What was behind your lots over here is still wooded. So I think that's helpful for the property. It's not like on an open lot right off the street. I think that's gonna be helpful. You're gonna have several hundred feet coming in before you get to your first unit. What I like about this design here is that we've chosen this, it's nice separation between units. Each unit's gonna have two parking spaces. We're doing like a single, this will be a single unit here with your two spaces, front to back. A duplex, for instance, here would have four spaces. A side, you know, front to back, front to back, in a, in a parking area. And what this does is it allows to create this little village green, which I like the idea of that. It sort of creates a sense of community, you can have a little space, you can put benches out there, you can hang out with the dogs at night. It gives a place for people to kind of meet each other, rather than just being off a strip, you know, a dead end road with a T-turnaround or something like that. So that's, I think that's kind of a nice part of the design. We are gonna have, obviously, underground sewer, water and electric. And we also have done stormwater management report and study. And what we're proposing are two, what are called soil filter beds here. So we're basically taking a site, as you know, that currently drains south to the culvert and through the swale and the cross culvert. And we're gonna take that water and have it stormwater. Now we're gonna have a stormwater management system, which will help detain that water, control it to the DEP and the town standards, and then discharge it to a piping system. So what you'll see in the rotor, rather than swales, are gonna be catch bases, and that's the underground stormwater. I think that's pretty much the bulk of the project. Let's see if there's anything else here we wanna talk about. Oh, one thing that Matt mentioned, we're both proponents of smart growth. Which basically talks about, like Matt said, developing in growth area. What I like about this, when we folks live here, is that it's walkable to downtown. You don't need to get in your car to come down to the service or something. You don't need, you're one block away from Main Street essentially. And I think that's, that's attractive, and you're also not far from the school as well, with the sidewalks up the street. So the location itself serves that well. I know there might be concerns from the neighbors, but we're trying to make this something that fits in the neighborhood to the best of our ability. And still makes, and still able to make it work as a, as a workforce housing project. So that's all I have to say. I'll put it back to the chair to open it up for comments. Thank you. All right, Pete?
All right. Should we give our questions to you or Matt? That's what I wanted to answer.
Yeah.
You can say it to the chair and I'll listen in.
So just to be clear, these are gonna be rentals and not ownership now?
Correct, correct.
So then the, the people who rent these, they're gonna be in like a long-term lease? Is that how this is, what's typically the life of the lease?
I think it's typically a year, but it's renewing as long as everybody wants it to be.
Okay. You're gonna know the guidelines of it.
Oh, yeah. Very, very serious guidelines. And no sub letting, you know, it's gotta be your full time.
And then the, the rents are gonna be $1,000, $1,600 a month max?
Right, that's the max.
So. Your company, your company combined owns the whole thing?
Yes.
And then you're gonna have a management company rent, run it? Is that managing?
Correct, yes. They have to be qualified and experienced in running this, this better.
And the units doing? Thank you, go.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's, that's one thing to follow up on that question. And I don't want this to sound self-serving. We're, what we're really trying to do is serve as the town's developer on this. And follow that vision that we heard about, attainable housing. If the town wants to get more involved, if a local housing group started up, if there was gonna be another project. We're totally okay with working with local people, a local committee. I mean, even at some point, you know, transferring ownership to a local group if that made sense. So we're.
No, I think it's a good spot for it.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, having the local involvement, because one of the things that's awkward for us is we're driving up here, you know, two and a half hours every time. And obviously, the management company will be up here, but the more local people to get involved. That would be great.
I'm sorry, are the, you know. Are the, are the units, I guess you'd call them, are they gonna have a basement?
What we're talking about now mostly is crawl spaces, but some of it, because of the topography, we might be looking at daylight basement type units, or Rick can talk on that.
These are, at least these two, possibly this, these might not be, but these two really, they wanna be walkouts, just based on the graves there and fill, so those are probably most likely to be walkouts.
Yeah, well, some of those places.
We have, yeah, we've done the testment, so we know the fill, it's gonna have to go below that, that grade.
Yeah. All of the cottages you see are retirement communities, those are all in built-up crawl spaces. So that's what we're, we like the combination of softer, warmer floor and being able to get underneath there without.
Versus flat on grade.
So is this, is this gonna be like the beginning project you were talking about, like the primary heat sources, heat pump?
I believe, I believe that. Yeah, I believe that's the way everything's going now. But you have to meet the Main State Housing Authority's long list.
I think that's the way to get money out.
Right, right. And they're pushing a higher and higher standard of energy efficiency.
So are you gonna be using local materials, local buildings, and local electricians and farmers?
Folks probably know that M&amp;H own the land. So we've talked to them about it, and they've given us a quote on the infrastructure and things. So they'll be definitely involved, totally open to doing things local with stick or local with modular. Or the guys I've been talking to lately are at Brunswick, and they do a modular, but there's still need to be stuff done, the final units. When I first got up here a couple of years ago, what I heard was, local builders are flat out, and they really don't have. And that's gonna be a couple of years before they have capacity. If that's, if things are slowing down and people have capacity. More than happy to, we're gonna be in a, you know, long period of finalizing design and getting prices. So if people are interested locally, so.
My only thought on that was, I mean, if you're gonna ask the town for concessions, you should probably pass some money back to the town here.
Ideally?
Yeah. Are you gonna have sidewalks at all for these people that go down the street? Or is that?
We're not planning on sidewalks right now. Rick can talk more about that, but really, most of our communities, especially with the snow plowing and things, walking in the street, they're very quiet. So the street becomes a half road.
And before you had the duplexes, we only had one and a half parts of the structure.
Yeah, that's it. So two through the chair, I think at their last board meeting, I think we got the impression, the board pretty clear that they wanna go for the two. So we're not asking for a waiver, we're gonna make, make the two spaces per unit.
Well, if you only have one and a half, you're gonna have people parking on the street. When you have parking on the street, they're not gonna be able to get through there, the power and things, get them back to the house, fix it over.
Right. Would be minimal to have a, if they want some additional parking, we didn't show here, additional parking spaces, like on the, like, parallel spaces on the, on the, you know, loop there. We've got plenty to do with additional spaces. If the board were to make a condition or something like that, we're totally in favor of that.
Good, with you, does anybody have any land use concerns, or land use questions?
This might qualify. Can you turn the sign over to the board picture?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm trying to picture your plan superimposed on the existing kind of field as opposed to the woods. Because that second house on the right, second from the top, that's my house.
This one, right?
That's, that's the one. Yep. And I'm kind of just looking at where the trees are now, and I'm wondering like how much of them are gonna get removed, that kind of thing, if any, if any.
This right now, the, the tree line, I know right where your house is, right? You know, there's like a little fill slope here, it's actually kind of a drainage right here.
Yeah.
That, right from the spruce start. So you can see from the aerial that the woods line, I apologize, that the, the rendering shows a little bit in. The woods line is really at the bottom, that fill slope right there, that's what's gonna stay.
Okay.
It's not gonna go, it's not gonna go any further, it's gonna be inside. And then need be, behind the units, if we need landscape behind the units. But what we're planning on doing is, you know, that area is filled, about this high.
Yeah.
And then what we're gonna end up, finish, we have a grading and design and grading plan, engineered plans. That finished grade is about the same level, here or take. So it'll be, it's not gonna be much higher or lower, but the house will be there.
So behind the house, might get some landscaping? Oh, that's not even our property, that would have buffered.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's mine, yeah. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just trying to picture it.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't disturb that.
And how it, how it might, you know, kind of look from all angles, I guess I could say.
Yeah. We, we try to do a nice comprehensive landscaping job on all our communities. So whenever a neighbor, we need to add some trees to buffer, we'll do that on their property, we'll do that on our properties.
And the access is pretty much gonna be cross-street, there's no plans for any other paths, right?
Just, just cross-street.
Yes. Gary, that would be my concern too. I'm in, my name's Gary Caper, I'm in the next property below enforcement. And I see the way the parking spaces are set up now. My son lives there now with my granddaughters, and I can see people coming in late at night, headlights going right into the back of our house. And so I know there may be some natural foliage there right now, that play, playing the, so I'd like to see.
And so I know there may be some natural foliage there right now, but that play, playing the, so I'd like to see some additional buffering going through there for two things. First of all, for the light and the second would be for sound. Uh, because with that number of units back there, there's gonna be an additional amount of, of people living there, making normal noises, whatever, uh, coming in late at night. If this is workforce, that means it could be anytime from one in the morning and come in at that night, they're gonna be working at jobs and coming in all hours of the day and night. So that, that would be a concern of mine. Secondly, um, that's based on secondly would be earthquake spawner, fire protection. And you just mentioned, you know, with very limited parking and you have so many units there, okay, let's have a party. So we wanna have people who are for graduation, baptism or whatever, Fourth of July. Where are, does everybody wanna park? And so we have an annual school and there's people all over the place, parked on the street. Um, I foresee that as maybe a major bottleneck in there for flow. And so, uh, it was mentioned to us, they're gonna be in the sidewalks. Uh, we already had some sidewalks added to the town for protection for people walking the streets here in Rangeley, which gets much more snowfall than you folks live down, so we know that. And so, um, but traffic, you're saying that one of the big pluses is this closed box that they can walk at distance. Well, with twelve units and how many people, you're gonna be walking up and down all the time. How are they gonna be protected when there's traffic going in and out all the time? Then you have an emergency and you got a fire truck and then there are tower trucks. How's that gonna work as far as flow of getting fire protection in there and taking care of these facilities? Will there be additional fire protection? I don't know where the hydrants are located, their owl would know that. Um, what would access be like for them to be able to connect and get their lines in there for fire protection? So I'm not saying that I'm overtly against this plan, but I see a whole lot of pitfalls where it's located. And I'm not living in a home now, so my, my son and grand, grandchildren, if I was living there, I would have great concern about that many units of closed box sending to the properties around it. Through the chair, should we answer, which of the, I'm taking notes and trying to answer questions when it's all done or do it individually? I'd be happy.
If it's, if you wanna answer, Rick, that's fine. You don't have to. We're, we're letting everybody speak, we're writing notes on their concerns. And, but if you wanna address them.
I, I, I mean, I can't address all of them, but I understand the concern, but just, if I could. The one, the one thing that I, there's always a debate about sidewalks. Bite that to me, I mean, I understand bikers, walkers, whatever. In a small community, a lot of our communities we do, there's a thing called street policy. It's a new, um, look at Pete, you might, you understand this from your, your background. We're basically for low, low volume streets, like where I, I live, encourage actually bikers, you know, walkers and cars to share the street. One, it slows people, it slows the cars down, but it's a behavior effect. And so here, sidewalks, well, not against sidewalks, increased cost, increased sort of setbacks to the buildings, is using the street for both, so that you walk on the side, you got a twenty-foot street. Four, four one fifty is, isn't seven feet wide, it's six feet, seven inches, very rare, yeah. And so you can actually, I mean, you can get two cars on a twenty-foot street going slow, but you're typically, someone's gonna step off the edge. So you've got grass, you have grass shoulders on your side, you can see both, both ways up. So the idea of walking in the street is something, it's, it's a new idea. Not, not that new, but it's, it's an idea that's part of smart growth. Reduce your impervious area by not having sidewalks, and it's not a high volume. So you don't, if it's, if it's something with a larger scale, it's sidewalks. But we think with this project, it would be fine to walk, you know, just to use the road as it is. You see cars coming visually, step off, and so it's a new way of thinking. But if you look at a lot of your side roads in town, they don't have sidewalks and people are able to walk, you know, if they need to. Um, as far as the headlights, absolutely, we'd be glad to sort of sit down with you and look, we've done this before and look, we get the gradient there and sit down with you and if you have an issue where headlights stick your car in the evening, whoever the house is gonna be, we'd be glad to have work with you on that and need additional screen, that's not a problem, so it's the kind of thing we do. So, uh, fire and rescue, I think they've signed off.
Yes.
And we are proposing a hydrant, I think it's right in here at the corner, per the chief's request. So we've met the chief's requirements and they've signed off on, on the access.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Gary. Now, let's, let's talk about lighting, is there gonna be street lighting or anything like that in this community? I know there's a big push for, for less lighting and for dark skies, environment, that kind of thing. Will the walkway in be lighted in any way for people coming and going? For night push traffic? I'll, I'll begin through the chair, happy to answer. We proposed in our initial discussion with the board that if anything, it'd be low-level lighting and we're night sky advocates and we proposed that in the initial application. Our thinking was, maybe like, like as you come in and maybe one at the, one at the, uh, if it's village green, uh, we'll sort of work that out, but, but all cutoff style, you know, LED cutoff style, downlights, yep.
And many of those also have timers around them.
Yeah. But we don't see, and even some of our senior communities, you're talking about seniors, I mean, I'll just get off here a little. Of all people, they want lit streets, they do not want lit streets, they want the night sky and they want to do the driveway. And then, yeah, you see the lights on in the houses, sometimes they'll put post lights at the end of the driveway, but very few lights, they don't want the lights. And up here, I think it would be just the lighting and the ambient lighting for the houses gives you that sense of sort of nighttime. Where I live, we just had someone propose a project and where I live, neighborhood came out and said, please don't put the lights. We like it dark, you know, so, um, very low lit, not exactly sure where the lights are going, but we're willing to put in a couple different, you know, just the beginning and the, if the What would you think would be the approximate spacing between the units? And the reason I ask that question, they actually could have two-foot snowfall. We may have no snow, snowfall coming this week. And I foresee that being a challenge for snow removal. And the management company would be in charge of snow removal for all of the units? Would they be individually responsible to have their own units taking care for lawn care and for snow removal?
Correct, the management company would be responsible. We are building the road to public standards, so they seek the town to take over the main road. But if the management company would be, it doesn't become public, you take care of the road and driveways, that's correct.
And answer to the chair the question about, the units as shown are about forty to fifty feet, variable, you know, between the actual unit to unit.
Thank you, Rick. Gary?
Thank you, Gary. I have one on Zoom. Is somebody on Zoom that would like to?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hello, Lee, John Sanizero, how are you? Great, thanks for, uh, thanks for taking my question. I, I got a question for Rick. Uh, Rick, I am in a butter to your property. My name is John Sanizero, my parcel is just directly to the right of your driveway. Come back.
Right here, right here, yes.
Yeah, that little house that's up close to the street. And I am not opposed to the project. Um, I, I think anyone should be able to do anything with their property and that, I've always said that. Uh, but I've got a few things for consideration that I've got a question about. And, um, it is regarding runoff. And as we had previously stated, and I totally agree, the runoff will occur from the top of the property down past my house and towards the lake. Puts me in the direct path of it. And, um, basically, what is my, I'm gonna back up a little bit and say, I, I got three sump pumps right now as it is. And what happens is when the water rushes down from Chick Hill, it sort of flattens out right there on Cross Street and settles in my basement along with my neighbors. So I know that I'm speaking for a group of people in addition to myself. So I know when you change the texture of the land, it's likely to change the flow of the groundwater. And, um, I'm wondering if you have considered any impact to that, I know I'm sure you have. Um, but if you could share with us your thoughts, maybe giving me any assurance that my basement won't get any wetter than it might already be? And how are you going to arrange those retention ponds so that it perhaps might flow into the cul-de-sacs? Uh, into the culverts rather? And, um, sort of steer it away from any of the buildings that are there? What are your thoughts regarding runoff?
Uh, through the chair, I think I can answer, yeah, please. Oh, thank you for the comments and I appreciate your, your coming and it's, we're, we've looked at your lot as well and understand this for the drainage. You are at the bottom of course of the hill. So the two, three points to that, one is the, the stormwater basins, what we call filter beds. They actually, they're like a, a dry basin and they, they actually filter the water with an underdrain. The underdrain systems go into a, uh, I'll show them this plan, storm drains which are in the street, down the street, and they discharge at the swale or proposing improvements to that swale where it's kind of eroded right here, the missing culvert, replacing this culvert here. So that's, that's one way, we're actually controlling the water that's coming down the hill, detaining it. We've done the hydrologic, hydrologic analysis for the two, the ten and twenty-five year current storms and for the whole project. And at each of the discharge points, the storms have a reduction, it gives a reduction in the peak flow that, that post development over current conditions. Two is what we find in, we know this area is wet, I mean, it's, it's a footbath. So, um, one of the things that happens when we do a project and anyone in construction sort of knows this, is an anecdotal thing. It's that when you start digging the trenches, you've got underground sewer trenches, underground water trenches. Uh, your cable and whatnot for TV is down thirty inches, you know, but even that helps. And then you've got a storm drain. And as you dig that, you actually end up wicking some of the water away from the deeper groundwater. So typically has an effect on groundwater, a positive effect by having the, the storm drain systems and the underground utilities in, in, in the, in the ground and waterfalling that. So again, the design, but we'd be happy immediately if you have specific concerns about this. What we're trying to do is maintain that existing swell, we're not touching your swell right here, that still gets down to the culvert.
Right.
And that will still remain, it's on, on the property line, you don't wanna touch that. But if you have specific concerns, we're happy to meet you on your site and take a look at it, so.
That'd be great. Yeah, I was just looking for a little of assurances, cause it was my primary concern now. That, I appreciate that, I, um, I do have some other questions, but I think you've covered them, so I'll, I'll refrain from now, but thank you for answering that one, Rick, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Right, thank you.
I have a question on John's question. I noticed on the first design, you call it a stormwater treatment pond. And now you call it a stormwater basin slash filter. And so I initially had a question like, was there a treatment that needed to be taken care of?
Yeah.
So I would like you to clarify, what is the difference in those two, please?
Thank you, through the chair. So, um, valid point, uh, we just, we use different nomenclature, our plans, and it says stormwater basin slash filter. Uh, these are actually, they're basins, but they are what we call, the DEP calls them an underdrained soil filters. And what they are is, is, uh, getting a little deep down, in the old days, people just detained water. So you take the peak flow, you put it in detention basin. I'll probably like that by the health center, there's that one big basin to patrol the peak. So the peak doesn't erode the streams and doesn't incapacitate culverts and it meters out slow, you know, in, in, by designing correctly. Today, what, because of, um, non-point source, the real emphasis besides that, we call it the flooding standard. Meaning so you don't have any greater peak wave flow coming out of your site than before. Now, one of the big focuses is, especially in the lake watershed, is stormwater quality. So what these filter beds do, they're designed to a DEP standard to treat the ones, it's a numerical thing, we have to run numbers, they have to be a certain size, we can only count for a certain amount of impervious, an inch of water, four, point four inches of water on your grass areas, et cetera. But you come up with a basin size and there's a media filter, it's not just grass like the old detention basin, it's a thirty-inch layer. The top fourteen inches is a special media that the DEP has approved that filters the water.
What is it?
It's, it's a, it's organic, it's like a combination sandy loam, organic, all like small wood chips, organic material. And they're hard, I forget, but it's, it filters the water, these are really effective. Then it goes through a gravel layer, it goes down to an underdrain. And I can tell you right now, uh, we built a number of these things and you have to monitor them. Um, and there will be, but there's a requirement for monitoring these things as part of the overall project maintenance. And the water that comes out of these things, if you have a parking lot and you see the dirty water all the way through, you can almost drink the water, they do work, it's, it's pretty amazing when you see these things. So we can show you, we can send you pictures of these things. So that's the way, so it's more than just a detention basin, it's a filter media. We call them, I apologize, we call them filter beds, we call them storm basins depending on, you know, sort of casually, but they are underdrained soil filters.
So you say it means monitoring, but does it need a treatment?
No, what you do is, if, if the soil's, the media on top.
Yeah.
Mentioned like a bar, bar, you put bar mulch on the top or grass, the top is grass.
Okay.
And if, if that compacts, one of the things we're doing when you do it here, regular maintenance, if that compacts, you can either take a roteller and loosen it up or take the top mulch layer and replace it.
And who would do that?
That would be part of the maintenance contract that they have with the, with the facility.
Thank you.
You want, that's, that's a poor device that these are, and they can approve it.
Yes, my name is Jean and I am a homeowner of, along Cross Street. My husband Ralph would like to speak.
Uh, yes, unfortunately, we weren't able to attend this meeting personally. We did get the notification by certified mail of the meeting. I have a panacea of concerns regarding this project. I wish I, we would have been able to speak personally to this. My first concern is regarding, unless I'm mistaken, the developers of this project do not own the property upon which the development is going to be built. Now, I think there was a point of clarification made that M&amp;H still maintained ownership of that property. And there was some kind of collateral agreement with the developers to do this development. I'd like to get a clarification on that from the representative, whichever representative of developers who can clarify that. And I have additional questions after that.
Uh, sure, that is correct, Matt here. Uh, we have a purchase and sale agreement with M&amp;H and that's very typical in the world of development. This has taken a while, so we're actually making option payments every month. So, uh, we've already have like about a hundred thousand dollars paid down on it. So typically you, it's toward the end when you're having a closing and you have your approvals and everything, then you close on the property. But, uh, we're fully, we have what they call right title and interest to the property. We've been paying our deposits, so that, that's all on schedule.
Right, good. Point of clarification I wanted to make, and Jean and I are forty-year residents of the town of Rangeley. And there's been numerous attempts to develop that lot over there, that five-acre lot. Most of it got thrown into the, into, into the back ashes because you need a minimum of two means of egress to that property to safely make a development of that size on that small apostle. For obvious health and safety and fire reasons, as was previously stated, if it was the Fourth of July and you've got that road backed up with party people, you'll never get an emergency vehicle in there and most importantly, you'll never get fire in there. Now, I realize that that puts a big hindrance on it, but that's always been the problem with developing that back acreage. There's never been two means of egress is what you need to safely develop it. Now, I realize the fire department has signed off on one fire hydrant, might be enough to get a little water there. I seriously doubt if that is the question. I'd like to see an engineering study that says we have the sewer and water capacity on Cross Street to support a project of that size. Once again, that's historically also been the hindrance that deterred the development of that back acreage. Now, I realize I don't wanna be the one who's throwing water, cold water on the party. Every previous attempt to do any kind of development back there, cost of development or private ownership has been hindered by, number one, that property back there has fifteen to eighteen feet of fill. That's why you see the elevation you see when you drive off of Cross Street. All of that is fill. Now, I know they did an engineering study. I'd like to see that engineering study because when the fill stops, that property drops down twelve or fifteen feet. That's how much fill was put into there. Now, I realize everyone would like to do some development in Rangeley. I don't think this is the kind of development we need. I'd have to see a feasibility study and in writing, what is gonna cost the town for water and sewer? Okay, and fire? Beyond one fire hydrant, period. I don't think that's gonna cut the mustard. Now, maybe I'm wrong. Now, maybe I'm wrong. I have to see some engineering studies that say one hydrant off of Cross Street is going to be sufficient. I don't even think the main on Cross Street is big enough or water or sewer to support that kind of, that, that development. What's the out of pocket cost going to be to the town of Rangely to provide water and sewer? And fire protection, realistic fire protection, 18 foot road? There's a duplex right on the side of that, that little cut out there.
Hi Jean, thank you. A lot of your questions, I think, could be answered with information that's already been provided, uh, by the developer and that stuff can be obtained right here at the town. So I'm going to move to the next question.
Okay, before you move and, and cut me out of the discussion, can I make an appointment to commit a person to sit down with you and discuss this?
You can show up at any planning board meeting, scheduled meeting and speak on, uh, the matter that you'd like to speak on.
I understand. Now, just one point of clarification. What exactly is the approval process involved now? Now, if we've had this meeting.
These folks have been going through this approval process for months, Jean.
Okay, okay.
This, this door has been open for months every time we've met with these people. And it's been going on for months.
Okay, okay. So, so basically, correct me if I'm wrong. We're basically at the point of approving this project?
No, no, we're a long ways from approving it, Jean.
Oh, 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 okay. Just that point of clarification is well taken. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Marty?
So the process, this is only for the land use. Anything after that will be going through the town and it will go to town meeting. So you will have the opportunity to vote on it at town meeting.
Thank you, Marty. Anybody else?
And we're, and we're happy to sit down and we, uh, go over engineering and all that kind of stuff. Whenever it works for you.
I have one more thing.
Yes.
We were talking about water. I, I'm in contact with Al Clint often. Um, since they built the two new, new houses, I'm lot 43 across the street from across. So there's, I have a new neighbor that's new and then the other side. And our water has been disheveled since then. It's virtually undrinkable. I talk to Al all the time. We, I understand that the chlorination process is working. And from what Chris Farmer here says, things should get better with a development or with more water flow. I'm wondering if there could be some sort of, um, like tax put on this, whereas if it gets worse, not better, that we have some recourse with the developers to get our water repaired or relined or whatever we need to have. I mean, we live in a place that is unbelievable water and we don't drink it.
I can't answer that question for you. I know the town has the opportunity to make whatever rules and regulations they want to see made. And again, so this is just in the early process. We're just trying to feel any concerns that the others especially may have. But yeah, we're a long ways from approving this. Chris?
I can just comment a little on that if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Between Allen Street and Center Street, there was a new section that was put in as well as when Allen Street was done, which was a larger pipe than, than there before. So the water flow reversed directions, which caused a lot of scaling coincidentally at the same time those 40 minutes came on. And I know the water district has spent extensive time on it because I ask about it at every meeting as the chair.
Right.
And, uh, we've done some treatment, which happened to be at the same time, some other issues with the system. The field is moving in the right direction. It seems to have improved, but, um, Tom can attest to this because we've, it's been a hot topic. We, we've stayed on top of it as a board and, uh, I think from what everything Alan, Ethan have explained to us, one of the things that we've been doing is flushing that line because it doesn't get enough use by those on there. So based on what Al has told me, and I'm not going to put words in Al's mouth, but I've asked him directly on this because I figured it would be, come up, is when those, if those units are built and put online, it will actually increase the flow of water there as opposed to having to do the flushing as we're doing regularly, might actually help rather than hinder on that part. But I understand the concern and, you know, as you work out your contractual agreement with this organization, you can, I'm sure.
Yes.
Note that in it.
Yep.
I just wanted to say.
Yes, ma'am. No, that's fine. Gary?
As far as the sewer is concerned, um, when I was on the board 10, 12 years ago, you know, we were looking at capacity. So where we were with our capacity at the sewer treatment plant. Now we're looking at 12 new units onto that, wondering is a part of your discussion with Ryan and the associate?
Yes.
Sewer treatment, are we approaching that capacity to where we may need to look to expand our facility up there?
Currently, from what I understand, they've told us that that development is not a problem. They can handle it.
And they put grease traps in it. I mean, they meet all the requirements that they, they put forth.
Please, please, sure. If I can make two quick comments. One is, um, there are no town, uh, town zoning requirements or state zoning requirements require two different addresses for a lot this size. So all you need is a single address. The second thing is you can also reach out to code enforcement if you want to come in and, and chat a little more about it. So we're also available.
Yeah, are we going with the, uh, the village zoning or are we going with the residential zoning? With the 100 foot?
I think we're trying to combine. And that's another thing that the town will have to approve. That's what we'll have to decide whether we'll let them do it or we won't. And it's all going to hinge on. I think the value of the project to the community.
Yeah, I have one other question.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea what this will do to property values in the area?
I wish we did. I wish we did.
I mean, you haven't done another workforce, 1,000. And wherever it is, that would give us a little ideal.
500% right now.
Yeah, there are five. I can tell you, I'll, I'll just throw this out there. The rents from a thousand to 1,600 still put this at a substantially higher income rental unit, I think. You know, I think if we were looking at 500 to a thousand dollar rentals or less, yeah, that would be a serious problem.
The other thing, uh, we're going to have a heat pump that's a heat source. A little meter is going to be spent in the winter time.
Yeah.
So add another, what's electricity?
Well, maybe we'll need a, maybe we'll need another solar field.
In the island up there.
The island.
In the green.
That, I do know this, but I've looked into this personally, the affordable housing. It's a situation that we have, everybody's trying to solve. And I could tell you, these gentlemen are doing well to try and follow all the regulations that the state, that the state requires. And, and they want, you know, things like PVC in the building to allow for future solar on the roof, uh, PVC in the ground to allow for future charging stations.
Nobody's handled that.
Yeah, electric heat throughout. So do I agree with it in this northern tier? I don't, but to, to get that, a unit like that, that's the rules that they're going to have to follow. So.
Well, can I ask them a question?
You've got one more. And I'm going to wrap this up at six o'clock.
So the, the primary source, can you do a secondary heat source, maybe propane stove or something that bring down the cost in the winter time?
Go ahead. There's one looking at you. I would hope that, yes, you could do that. I would hope. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if the chair. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a question we can answer. All right. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time. I hope everybody had an opportunity to speak. Uh, I can tell you that these gentlemen have been good to work with. I would take Matt's contact number. It has his phone number on it. And if you have any questions, I would feel free to call it. So the handout right here.
Thank you, Brian.
What will be the next step from here, Rick? Uh, we're going to make a decision at our next meeting whether we approve that plan. And that will set forth the ability for these folks to work with the town and go to get their funding.
What's the date of your next meeting?
It will be, uh, April 10.
Okay.
Don't you have a meeting ready after this?
Yes, at six o'clock. Seven o'clock, I'm sorry. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to postpone this meeting at 7:01 PM. Give me a second.
After white, after white. Your window down, is that your dodge?
No.
That's Wes's dodge.
That's Wes's dodge.
Hey Wes, you might want to pop your window up. It's starting to come down a bit. Unless you, unless you're trying to clean your seat off. I do that once. Got to do my presentation up there. So who was that, Jean?
They live next to, right, so get the plane there, next to, uh, your, your project, the long one.
Oh, the one that's.
This comes across.
I mean, the one that's like.
This comes down like, yeah. Right here. Yeah, yeah. Right, right there. So you actually front, you front on the lake. So. I told her.
I was trying to watch it from my car, but Marty wouldn't let me in. I guess sit there, charge my phone and, uh, watch the zoom. It must sound to see me fuck up or maybe I had the wrong lake.
Good job, Marty.
Yes. Thanks for telling me that.
Thank you.
Can we start now?
Yeah. You ready?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. No, no, they're done with us. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. It will end one day, I promise. Thank you, guys. Good or bad, it'll.
The second application. So.
Can someone stick around for mine? Can you sell their energy out of yours?
Are you on the new? Recording again? Are you on the new Zuma? Oh, we never stop.
No. Never stop.
I'm going to open this meeting at 7:04 PM. Uh, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Right. Clear or exposed conflict of interest. Just kidding.
Did you say what I think you just said?
No. Wow, just kidding, just kidding. We can't edit that. Adjustments to the agenda, Marty?
Thank you. If, if everyone just, if everyone just called up by that, I think what happened.
Public to speak on non-agenda item. Review minutes, March 13th, 2024. I need a motion to accept. Second, second call in favor? Thank you. Correspondence. New business. Continuing business. Uh, we are going to have to change that meeting date from April 10th, 24 for the decision on responsible housing. Uh, me and Mr. Dolby will not be here. Subdivision, okay, next subdivision application. Subdivision application, Hilltop Heights map 008 lot 18 dash A dash one and 18 dash B.
You guys have a chance to look it up.
Yeah. Chris, would you like to do a presentation of any?
I, I can, guys, it's pretty straightforward, uh, as, uh, if, have any of you guys been able to be up on the site at all? I know Wes is familiar with the site. There's, uh, I'll try to keep it short and sweet, but, uh, there's two houses already on the site, which will be lot six and five. And then we want to make eight lot subdivision. This one's already technically divided off already. I was there existing before from the original piece. Basically, we're going to just keep this dry. We're going to build it to town specs. Maybe eventually we'll come to the rise, but I don't want to add any more burden right now with the town until everything's sold. I don't think it makes sense. Uh, we're going to then take out the way that goes down by Jamie and Crystals. We're going to re-vegetate that. So they've got a nice buffer. And, uh, we're going to put in these two level lip spreaders that'll take, will take any of the water there. And then we're going to bring another down to here and build a little filter pond, which was in the specs we had there. That should more than meet our needs for phosphorus if not there. We retain this as additional commercial lot to do possibly something with, which, uh, we also have this slot right here. So when I say we am speaking on behalf of Telisys, it's, uh, it's Telisys online, but. So the goal would actually be that if we develop here, obviously we come back to you with what we're going to do, all that. And as you know, this entire parcel is in a commercial zone. So that allows us to do a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. But all these, as you can see, are pop up a little bit more than half an acre, if not more. I did make lot eight, uh, with this as one long strip so it could kind of just be preserved as a, as a tree line, which is a buffer for the fines that are right here. And then the other lot is owned over here is, um, gentleman who bought out the Dick Winkton's old place. So he owns all the way to the lake down there. So that's a back corner there. And then the Higgins who just listed themselves on the market. And then I think there's a couple other neighbors up there on the backside there.
Did you have mainland do a phosphorous study?
I did, and it's right in there for you to review. And I think Emily did a good job. So it's actually, uh, it's kind of fun. Emily, uh, Emily's doing that, um, she grew up here, Patty's daughter. Yeah. So it's kind of nice that it's all local people working on it. So, pretty straightforward. You'll see there's two test pits here. One is where they perked there, but it's, it's close to the well that Steve had put in years ago. So I had a second one done over here because I just don't want to deal with the wave repeats. This thinking might make more sense to set it, set it back here. So, but I did have it done so I could go either option. For some reason soils don't work there. But every, uh, you've got the soil logs there. You get to see everything's pretty straightforward. Not trying to make this overly complicated. I wrote up the road association rules. Those are in there. I kept it pretty simple. Open if you think we're missing something or restrictions in that. I do know that, um, I do have a plan with that because I do manage most of this stuff here that we will make sure that, you know, these are all preserved. The filter pond, if it gets built up, we'll get it dug out, those type of things. Because these things are only as good as if we maintain them.
Is that going to be in an HOA? Are you going to put those?
Yeah, I developed an HOA for it just because that's one of the things people like to see. And, uh, it just makes it simpler. That way we can add rules or restrictions, whatever. It just makes it simpler. That way we can add rules or restrictions, whatever. If anything pops up in a public hearing, I'm not expecting a lot of. Questions on that, but.
We have many about it.
We don't. Because uh they are there, so we just got these right along here. So.
So we're looking for a motion to accept.
To accept the plan as final, so we can set a date for our public hearing.
So I'm looking for a motion to accept the plan as final. Second. Second, all in favor. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate your time. Uh next meeting, April tenth, will get moved to, so.
Well, do you want to, you wait, talk to Jerry first?
Yeah, I'd love to be able to do it if we could.
Both you and Wes are gone?
I'm gone.
Oh, you're gone. No, okay.
I'm gone.
Yeah, I mean, no, so I'll just, let's give uh.
I'll be here.
Let's give Jerry a call. I know, so let's just. So we're definitely having him an opportunity. He can't be here.
You don't blink like.
And uh would it be possible to schedule after the public hearing if there's no substantial issues to be able to give final approval?
Finding the facts.
Yeah.
We could do finding the facts at night?
Yep.
That would be great.
We we can, we can approve a a subject we're staying there from zero to thirty days, sixty days.
Yeah, I'd like to just get ready to set so I can get. Billy over there can start taking because it's nice. It's off room four, so we can work on it during Monday.
Oh, I get.
So.
So so I'm thinking, look here, public hearing, even you guys are back. And I would say four weeks from now, we just.
I'm not going to be back till the middle of May.
Yeah. I'd love to schedule the tenth, and if we have to bump for lack of a form, I don't mind showing back up one minute.
I think, I think I'd be back on the twenty-third.
That's happening here.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, so I should be back by then.
It's the last schedule, but.
Then I'll be gone on the eighth.
So you want to have a form for the tenth?
We.
May.
May is a little Jerry.
But it's unlikely.
Okay, all right. I understand.
Thank you, Chris. I made a motion. We adjourn the meeting at seven thirteen. I need a second. All in favor? Thanks, guys.